Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, December 13th, 2018 meeting of the Northampton School Committee. I'm Mayor David Narckowitz. We will begin the meeting by asking the board to call the role of the school committee.
Mayor David Narckowitz?
Present.
Ms. Molly Burnham?
Present.
Ms. Rebecca Buzhansky?
Present.
Laura Fallon?
Present.
Ms. Anne Hennessy?
Present.
Ms. Delani Kaufman?
Present.
Mr. Downey Meyer?
Here.
Mr. Howard Moore?
Here.
And Susan Voss?
Present.
Mr. Ed Zahouski?
Present.
Your Honorary have a quorum.
Thank you. I do want to let the public know that this meeting is being recorded by Northampton Community Television. And now we'll move into the public comment period. I have a sign up list here. I would ask when you come to the podium that you just state your name and address for the record. And I will have a timer to keep the three minute time. We just ask you to try to keep your comments to three minutes so that everyone has an opportunity to start to speak. And I believe Suzanne Strauss. Okay, yes, I wasn't sure until I saw you.
Hi, everybody. Happy holidays. My name is Suzanne Strauss. I live at 809 Ryan Road in Florence, and I'm a teacher at the Northampton High School. And my kids went through the Northampton School as well. So I'm here today to talk about the $20,000 that you're considering spending for revisiting of the math curriculum. And as somebody who teaches at the high school, this is my 21st year there, I could say, and I've polled a lot of people, I'm speaking for myself, but I think I know that I am speaking for a lot of other people, that the faculty at Northampton High School feels disrespected by this process. And that it is very important that the people who put things in place did it with very, a lot of thought and integrity. And in fact, Smith College professors and UMass professors have all said the kind of program that we have is what they're looking for. And it seems to me to be not a good use of money. And I think that we have much more pressing needs. We are at a public school where some people kind of want a private school education, but we are a community school where everybody gets a fair shake. And I really feel that people like Rachel Stavely Hale, who is going and giving workshops around the state in this issue, and has a vested interest in students in our school doing the best that they can. And I really feel like you should not spend the money on this, but put it to better use. And I'm sure that you're conscientious and care about the students of Northampton, but you know, it feels a lot of times, and more so lately, that the people who are professionals are not invited into the process in a way that feels that you're valuing us. And the people, we're losing people, and we will continue to lose good teachers if alls we do is say, "What you say doesn't matter." We have to go outside and get a consultant to tell us what we already know. I just think that that's wrong, and I don't think we should do it. And I am speaking for many, many faculty who I've been polling over the last number of weeks. And I know that a lot of people would like to be here tonight, but people have a lot of other obligations. So I really think you should reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person who's signed up is Mary Cowie.
Trying to see everybody off this microphone, sorry. My name is Mary Cowie. I live at 29 Laurel Park, Northampton. I'm a parent of two graduates of the Northampton Public Schools, and I've been teaching at Jackson Street School for 22 years. For the second half of my teaching career, I've been working as a math specialist. In short, I know more than a little bit about teaching math. I'm also a NACE member and a building rep. I'm here to oppose the $20,000 request for a proposal for a consultant to study our secondary math curriculum. First of all, I feel it's a waste of money, especially as we're about to enter collective bargaining, where we are often met with an austerity narrative. But really, let's get to the question of pedagogy. The Common Core curriculum, which Massachusetts adopted, includes eight standards for mathematical practice, which were developed not by high school students, but by actual mathematicians. These standards set the bar for what a mathematics curriculum should look like in practice when you walk into a math classroom, whether that is in first grade, or seventh grade, or 10th grade, or 12th grade. You should see these practices, not just posted on a wall, you should see students doing them. I teach first, second, and third graders, and I would like to thank Tasha Rimini, my colleague at Bridge Street School, for this kid-friendly version of the standards that I use with my students. I can solve problems without giving up. I can think about numbers in many ways. I can explain my thinking and try to understand the thinking of others. I can show my work in many ways. I can use math tools and tell why I chose them. I can work carefully and check my work. I can use what I know to solve problems. I can solve problems by looking for rules and patterns. When all of you school committee members and I went to school in the '60s, the '70s, and the '80s, we didn't have these standards for mathematical practice. We jumped through the fixed hoops of algebra, geometry, trigonometry, Algebra II, pre-calculus calculus. That was it. We had teachers, usually white men, standing at blackboards, lecturing us on algorithms, procedures, and formulas, scribbling chalk notes, which we furiously copied in our notebooks and memorized. We were rewarded for memorization, speed, and regurgitation of formulas. If we stayed after school for help, a teacher would show us how to do it, and then we'd be given a sheet to continue the same problem again and again for practice. Beyond the formal geometric proof, no one asked us to explain our thinking. Am I right? Is that what your math education was like? That's what mine was like. But that was so last century, literally. I understand that some parents are nostalgic for what was familiar to them back in the 20th century, but math pedagogy has improved, as it should. As Dr. Provost spoke about in our meeting with educational and political leaders in Western Mass on Tuesday, we are educating students for jobs that haven't even been created yet. These are 21st century jobs, and we need 21st century pedagogy. The integrated math curriculum at the high school is that kind of 21st century curriculum. If you have a question about our curriculum, ask a teacher. If you want to know what math looks like in Northampton, please join us in our classrooms. Talk with our extremely professional math colleagues about the process they used and the research they considered when they developed the interactive math program. Respect our teachers. Please vote no on the $20,000 consultant. Thank you.
Sorry. Good timing. Okay. Next up is Rebecca Thomas.
Hello, everyone. I'm Rebecca Thomas. I live at 223 Cardinal Way. I have a junior and a freshman at Union College, both went through Northampton High School system. My son went through the traditional math trajectory, the algebra, geometry, all of that. My daughter was the first group to go through the integrated math. And I'm here to share her thoughts. Let's see if I can open my phone. She sent me this text because she's not here right now, but she wanted to share this with you. Starting in eighth grade in algebra, I thought it was very interesting and rather easy to understand, and I felt it gave me a strong platform for what I was going to learn later on. Though when getting to the high school, we were taught a different type of math in which I never felt actually helped me understand the basics. And those feelings were right. The group setting made it very difficult to learn, because when I had a question, the teacher told me to ask my classmate. Come to find out, none of my classmates had the answer, and I was still left with many unanswered questions by the end of the term. There, I learned nothing, and I felt I learned nothing. Many days, we would sit around, and I don't remember finding any of the work to be useful. Then by spring of sophomore year, I was an honors pre-calc. I entered this class thinking I'd been prepared, and I was going to learn, considering I took all honors integrated math in the sequence. And I did well in those classes. I couldn't have been more wrong. I had always been strong in math until taking integrated math. This was shown in pre-calc. Every day started with a mini quiz. Only once did I get 100. All the others were 60s and lower. This is because the quizzes were supposed to be a review of what I should have already learned, though this was the first time I had seen most of it. I scraped by with a B-, being mortified, considering I'd never gotten anything below an A- in a math class. Every day, I felt like an idiot, a failure, like I didn't belong in math class. This feeling followed me through all the math at the high school and has followed me into college. I had to drop math in college because I was failing, because I never learned the basics of algebra in high school. So that is a science experiment. My son, completely successful, did very well in calculus at Union College. The beauty of this, my daughter went through different math track, also at Union College, failed out of calculus, dropped out of calculus. She is now teaching herself algebra on her own with a book that we borrowed from the high school. Thank you, teachers, for lending us the book. And she's going to have to take it at UMass next summer in order to stay on track with her biochemistry major. That's all I have to say.
The next speaker is Andrea Egito.
My name is Andrea Egito. I live at 431 Spring Street, and I am the Teacher Chapter Coordinator for the Northampton Association of School Employees. I'm going to make this brief, because I know you've all heard me speak at the last three meetings about this topic. And what I'd like to say to you, just to reiterate, that our teachers are known across the state and the country for their work. And their work in writing curriculum, creating curriculum, they are teaching their colleagues at conferences on a regular basis. No one is saying that our math program is perfect. And as we heard from the previous parent, I'm sure there are many situations where students may struggle and things can be improved. And our teachers will be the first ones to tell you, we were just talking before this meeting, we're constantly learning, we're constantly growing, and we want to learn and grow and make our schools the best for all students. And the way to do that is to give their professionalism and their knowledge the respect that it deserves. We don't need an external study. We don't need to spend $20,000 to do it. We need to give our teachers time and honor their expertise and let them create the vertical math curriculum from kindergarten, which I teach, all the way to 12th grade. It's possible. We're not there yet. We still have a lot of work to do, and no one is saying that we're perfect. But what we are saying is, our teachers have the expertise, and when they don't, they know who to ask, right? So what we're asking from you today is to give the teachers and our Curriculum Instruction Director the opportunities to do that, the time and the support. We don't need to spend $20,000 to go to an external expert, because our experts are right here. And we ask that you respect them, and you give them that opportunity to continue to improve. We've made so many gains in so many areas. And we do have more work to do, and no one's denying that. But we are asking that you respect our teachers and their expertise and professionalism and the work that they really want to do. They love this work, and they want to continue to improve for every single one of our students, not just a privileged few, but every single student in the Northampton Public Schools. So I ask of you tonight that you vote against spending this money to get an external study, but instead, give our teachers the time that they need to do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That is all the folks who've signed up this evening. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in the public comment? Okay. So with that, we'll move on to the rest of the agenda. Are there any announcements from members of the school committee? Oops, I forgot that, oops. Your time's up, Andrea. Sorry. Okay, any announcements? Oh, yes.
I just wanted to let people know if they're interested, the MTA is hosting a community forum on education funding on Wednesday, January 9th, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at the Community Room in Eastworks. And there is free childcare and free pizza available.
Anyone else wish to make any announcements from the school committee? Okay, hearing none. We'll move into the recommended actions, and we have a consent agenda this evening that includes several field trip approvals. The JFK Spanish Club going to New York City, Repertorio Teatro at Central Park Zoo on April 30th, 2019. The JFK Latin Club going to New York City, the Met, Central Park Zoo, April 30th, 2019. The NHS Indoor Track Team going to the Winter Festival in Roxbury Crossing, Massachusetts, December 16th, 2018. The NHS Indoor Track Team going to the MSTCA Indoor Relays at Roxbury Crossing, Massachusetts, January 20th, 2019. The NHS Indoor Track Team, MSTCA Coaches Indoor, Roxbury Crossing, Mass, January 27th, 2019. NHS going to the Model United Nations at Yale University in New Haven, Connecticut, January 17th through the 20th, 2019. We also have three budget transfers. The first is for Unit A lane changes. The second is for a DESI account number, a reclassification, and the third is for special education transfers. I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda. So move.
Second.
Second. All those in favor of approving the consent? Yes. Ms. Hennessy?
I have a procedural, or I don't know if it's a procedural question, and if it's a longer answer, you could respond another point. Why do we put the track teams Massachusetts meets on this?
That's a good question, tradition.
I asked that question, and they sent it to me, and they said, "We always have done it." For this particular thing, maybe it's a certain mileage away or something.
Okay. Just, it feels redundant and not necessary, but it's okay. That's a good concern.
All right, we can look into it. Maybe leaving the tofu curtain thing or something.
Maybe. Go to Chick-A-Bee.
Yeah, okay. So all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so next we have reports and recommendations. Our student representative, Mr. Diaz, is not here this evening. So then we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the NEF Small Grant Awards, which we will be asked to vote to accept. And Dale Melcher is here this evening to give us an overview of this.
Thank you. Dale Melcher, 61 Lyman Road, Northampton. So I'm here to ask you to accept as gifts the following grants that the NEF Small Grants to Teachers Committee recommended to the Board and the Board approved. I think you all should have copies. Before I go through the grants, I just want to, as usual, thank Laura Fallon, who is the school committee representative on the NEF Board and who sits on the Small Grants Committee as well, who has been beyond wonderful in helping us navigate some of the questions raised about the appropriateness of certain grants and who we should contact for more information. So thank you, Laura. And our two excellent students, back for, I believe, his third year, Jay Ho Chung and our newest student, Tadea Martin Gonzalez, both of whom have been enormously helpful. It's really valuable to have students on the Small Grants, who contribute a great deal, not only to discussion of grants at the high school, but at the middle school and the middle schools as well. So we really value their participation. So the Board of the Northampton Education Foundation approved funding for the following 11 grants for a total of $26,882. Just in case you think everybody asks for the max. It's all 2018 cycles. And I should also tell you that this cycle, we received 21 applications totaling more than $64,000. Our teachers, our community members are wonderful and have really wonderful ideas about what they want to do in the classroom and in the school. Several of the grants that we weren't able to fund, we have encouraged them to apply for the endowment grants, because really, they're bigger projects, they're multi-year projects, which we are not allowed to fund. And they're for larger amounts of money than really the NEF Small Grants Program is set up to do. Others were invited to apply for the spring cycle, which tends to be less competitive. Looking at many of our frequent clients here. So let me just do a quick review of them. The first grant is at Bridge Street School. It's called "The Wonders of Water." Nicole Benel and Mary Demerath are the teachers that are receiving this grant, and that's a grant for $3,000. The second grant is a professional learning community grant, Number Talks and Socioemotional Learning, for $1,200, and that's Mary Tally and Talia Kasson. The third grant is Year Three of an incredible project at Leeds School called the Redbacked Salamander Project. If you don't know about it, you should go to Leeds and go out with them looking for salamanders under boards. And that's a total of $2,810. The fourth grant, also at Leeds, is a multimedia approach to immigration for $2,550. That goes to Andrew Foster and Rocky Mariani Prawl. The fifth grant, Pottery on Wheels, for $2,040, goes to Greg Kerstetter, a former school and school teacher, and now a community member involved at JFK. The sixth grant, we loved this. It's a very small grant and a little retro, but the La Cia Tuolo Penpal Project at JFK with a modern technological Skype-y twist to it for $500. Grant number seven goes to Ellen Kennedy at JFK for the After-School Science Supergroup. Ellen Kennedy has been doing this for quite a while, and we are really happy to help her out continuing this wonderful project. Again, this is our students. Couldn't say enough wonderful things about their experience or their other students' experience. And that's a grant for $2,500. The eighth grant goes to Michelle Mallory and Peter LaBruciano, also at JFK, an art project called "Identity Masks Revealed" for $2,527. The ninth grant goes to Paul Kinsman at the high school to help create a jazz ensemble, and that's $2,355. And it's really exciting for us to fund this particular grant, because we have been funding the jazz program at the middle school for several years, and this now ensures that students who go through the middle school jazz program have a jazz ensemble to audition for, become a part of at the high school. The 10th grant is Bringing the Latin American Rainforest to Life. This is Year Two of this grant, and another grant we're very excited about. That grant involves both Jackson Street School and JFK, and the total for that grant is $3,900. The final grant, which goes across all the elementary schools, called Reading into Diversity, goes to Bill Brown, a parent, Holly Taylor, and Lauren Lawrence Riddell. And that's a grant for $3,500, a project that we thought would really enhance the school's efforts to deal with diversity issues. So the Northampton Education Foundation asks the Northampton Public Schools to accept these gifts.
Okay. Does it make a motion to accept the gift from NEF and Small Grants? Is there a?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. All right. All those in favor of accepting these generous gifts from NEF, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Excellent. Thank you, Dale, and thank you to the Board of NEF and for all the donors and volunteers. Next item on the agenda is another gift. This is for RK Fin Ryan Road, PTO. It's a kiln that appears to have a value of $3,212.
Correct. So in your packet was an acceptance of donation form, and they are planning on purchasing it from Sheffield Pottery. And the maintenance director has already approved it, even though the signature isn't here. I spoke with them.
Motion to accept the monetary gift for the PTO of $3,212, which is of a kiln.
$3,000.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. And I have my glasses on. $3,212. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So all those in, any discussion of this gift? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the gift, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Next, we have the announcement of the Ad Hoc Screen Time Committee. You may recall back at our September meeting, there was an item on our agenda to refer, a request to refer the issue of screen time to our Rules and Policy Subcommittee to Study after a debate of the school committee. It was then decided that the committee would instead be in favor of forming an ad hoc committee to examine the issue, so that there could be input from teachers, administrators, parents, et cetera, to take a look at it. So I am going to tonight announce the names of the folks that I have asked to serve on this ad hoc screen time committee. I'm going to get a memo out to you first thing tomorrow. I had a little glitch with the letterhead, so I, we'll get that out tomorrow. But I can at least read the names of the folks that I'm pointing. First is Dr. Diana Johannison, who's our school physician. Karen Jarvis Vance, who's our Director of Health, Safety, and Equity Programs. Leslie Wilson, who's the middle school principal. Molly McLaughlin, who's our Digital Literacy and Computer Science Coordinator. Celeste Melvezzi, who's our Associate Principal at the high school. Jenny Podell, who's a general education teacher. Liz Skelly, who's a special education teacher. We have a student, the aforementioned Jay Ho Chung, who's both a student, he's also a member of the Student Union. Dr. Provost. School Committee Member-at-Large, Susan Voss. And then I have an elementary parent and Bridge Street School Council member, Ronnie Gold. And then I have an elementary and middle school parent and a member of the JFK School Council, Kat Allen. So that, those are the 12 folks that I have asked to serve on this. And as I said, we'll be getting you out a asked to serve on this. And as I said, we'll be getting you out a, a complete list in the next day or so. And I'm gonna ask Superintendent Provost to work to sort of convene that group and get it, get it going in the next few weeks. So, that's the committee. Next item on the agenda is a vote to accept an NHS PTO gift and to reprogram a sum of money for 10 teacher requests. And I will ask Kami to go ahead and explain that.
Sure. In your packet was a list of NHS PTO grants that they wanted to actually reprogram the funds. They do have available funds that were unspent previously. There's gonna be a correction to the total. So, the second item on the list, the PTO, was already paid for, the $200 for the college readiness. And also, the reason to remember has been paid for already by the PTO. So, the total is $3,935 to be from reprogram funds at the high school's PTO funds.
Is that four, four, three, five, or two, three?
Three, 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 nine, three, five.
Three, nine, three, nine. Okay. So, yeah, I'd make a motion to accept from the NHS PTO and the amount of $3,935 to reprogram those funds for 10 teacher requests.
Is there a second?
Sir.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So, now we move into the reports, and we have a report from our Rules and Policy Subcommittee on several policy revisions. And I'll turn to the Chair, Ms. Fallon.
Thank you. So, first up, we have the second reading and vote. It was the consolidation and revision of policies, JICG, which was Tobacco Use by Students, JICH, Alcohol Use by Students, and JICI, Substance Abuse. And we would like to consolidate those into a policy that you should all have received, Policy JICH, Alcohol, Tobacco, and Drug Use Prohibited. Many of the changes that were in there reflect changes that we had to include because of changes in the Massachusetts General Law. And others were just replacing the word "student" with "person" so that we could make this applicable to all of those on the, at student school-sponsored events and on school property. We also included language that Karen Jarvis Vance helped us with around the definition of tobacco and nicotine delivery products. And cross-references and legal references were updated. I think that was the majority of the changes. So, I'd like to make a motion to approve Policy JICH.
Second.
And can I also make a motion to amend one, two areas that I noticed after the fact?
Okay.
The first one is just simply adding a hyphen. We put a hyphen for one school-sponsored, but not for the other, and I like it to be consistent. So, the last line of the first paragraph where it says "school-sponsored event," could we add a hyphen there?
I'll second that. We're gonna do these one at a time?
We don't have to.
Okay. So, there's been a motion made and seconded to add a hyphen. Any discussion? Any debate? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? So, that passed?
Okay. And then the other amendment that I'd like to add was, it's in the policy that you received, but it wasn't in the first reading, so I just want to make sure that we've done this appropriately, that that cross-reference, JLCD, Administering Medication to Students, is included. So...
So, there's a motion to amend to add that?
Second that?
Any discussion on that? All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? So, now we're back to the main motion, which is the approval of the overall consolidated policy. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So, that's approved.
And then next, with our new process of only addressing issues, policies that have been referred to us by the full committee, I'd like to ask you to refer quite a few policies to us. I met with Kami recently, and we discussed the policies that were priorities. And so, I'll give you a tiny bit of background on each of these and why we're asking them. But essentially, these are, have come to us because in her new role Kami has found that there are some of these that, that we need to, we need to update. And so, Policy DN is School Properties Deposition. Our current policy has supplies, equipment, or real estate which have no further value to the school department. She'll be turned over to the City Property Committee, which no longer exists. So, due to the renovations at Bridge Street School with the library, they have, they're actually under a little bit of a time constraint, so I may ask for us in January to only, to do two readings in one night. They don't know what to do with the old library furniture and equipment because they have nothing, they have, they have no policy to operate under. So, that's, that's from 2003, and we should probably update that anyway. So, I'll be hoping to bring that to you from our Subcommittee for January. Other policies that we'd like referred would be JJF, Student Activity Accounts. That's governed by Massachusetts General Law, and it may need to be revised regarding language around inactive student activities and student activity deficits. Policy GBEBD is a crowdfunding policy. The Massachusetts Association of School Committees consulted with the General Counsel to the Massachusetts Ethics Commission and found that there were some important, there were some important legal implications to crowdfunding and our policies. And so, the suggested policy incorporates language from the Ethics Commission into it. So, we'd like to take a look at that. And then Policy DJ, Purchasing, needs to be updated. Policy KCD, I know we've seen this many times over the years, is public gifts to the schools. There are a few changes that need to be made that, to that. And they also may need to be made in relation to the naming policy that we're hoping to bring to you one day. And then Policy KF is Community Use of School Facilities that we have been working on over the years, but it does need to be updated again. So, that's what we would love for you to refer to us. And it will take us a while to get through it all if you do refer them to us, but...
Is that a motion to refer?
Uh, yes, it is. It's a, I would move to refer all of those policies to the Subcommittee for...
I'll second that.
Okay. So, there's been a motion made and seconded to refer those policies? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. The policies are referred. Is there anything more for your report?
No, that's all.
Okay. So, the next item on the agenda, item G, is a vote. This is to approve the transfer of funds for a math study. This is an item that's been, that's been on our agenda for a bit and has been deferred to several different meetings to allow for us to have all of the members of the school committee here. So, I don't know if we want to just review what, what exactly this is, just for folks who haven't been following the issue. Do you want to just give us a review, Dr. Provost, of this?
Sure. In the summer, we were discussing some data that had to do with student enrollment in higher-level math courses at the high school. One idea that emerged from one of those discussions was to have a math study performed. There was some discussion with the faculty of the high school and middle school about what such a study might look like, if it could potentially be helpful. That was brought forward originally as a proposal to collaborate with professors from Mount Holyoke College and UMass on developing a, just developing some responses to some teacher questions about practice. When that was brought forward, one of the concerns that was raised by the committee was that that might lead to a result that the public didn't have faith in because teachers and staff were involved with the selection of the experts to come in, and so that it might be better to put it to an RFP and let it go to, let it just be bid on the open market. So, an RFP was brought forward, and then, as you said, it was deferred for several months so that all the school committee members could... I guess I would just finish by thanking Andrea Gido for her comments tonight. I think that in the run-up to this, it's, it's been suggested or felt that voting again, or voting for this would be a rejection of teacher expertise and the curriculum they selected. But voting against it would be a rejection of some of the experience that parents and teachers have, that parents and students have shared. But I think that her comments, she showed that we are committed to making all of our programs better no matter what. And so, I would really hope that this vote not be cast as something more than it is. I think that it's just a question about a potential avenue for improving our math program. Maybe it's a good idea, maybe it's not a good idea. But in the end, we're gonna work on continuing to improve the math program in all aspects of our curriculum, whether or not this is approved.
So, is there, first of all, does someone wish to make a motion to put it on the table for debate?
So moved.
Okay. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Meyer. So, it's made and seconded for purposes of debate, and then I would open up the floor. Ms. Foss?
Um, I'd just like to add a little information, because we've had a chance to hear a lot, but we haven't had a chance to respond. And to build on what Dr. Provost just shared, I was part of this discussion in the summer. And it was overall a really good discussion. And I think Ms. Avlee Hale and the others at it, there were four of us, felt like we were all trying really hard to figure out how as a community, which includes teachers, school committee members, community members, parents, kids going through the math program, could come together and talk about what could we do collectively to make it better. And I don't think, I just want to assure people, I don't think, I have not, I've talked to a lot of people because they've approached me about math, but there aren't people out there saying the teachers are doing a bad job. And that was a misconception at that meeting, and we talked about it. And I did feel that maybe some of the teachers feel that way. And I just want to reassure people, I don't, I don't think that's going on. I think the teachers are doing a fantastic job. And at that meeting, Dr. Provost said that he'd been thinking about this and thought maybe a consultant would be helpful. And I think nobody had really talked about it, and we all left thinking, well, maybe that's the path to go down. And that's the last I've really talked to any, anybody about that. Seeing the request for proposal and hearing from the teachers, I think it's, and it's, for me, it's not so much the price tag, it's just the way it's come out. I don't think this is a good idea to, to go about the conversation in this way. I, I do want to say, I think if there was a way to really help our, our program and everyone feel better about it and make good progress, $20,000, a one-time deal, would be money really well-invested. Okay? So, for me, it's not the amount of money, it's just that it doesn't feel like it's the right way to go about things. And I've been thinking about this a lot over the last two months, hearing comments. And I don't know how to proceed, but I do know, we talk about this growth mindset, and we made major changes in our math process. I'm not even gonna call it curriculum, because that's another misconception, I think, and I'll talk about that in just a second. But when you make big changes, it's worth having a discussion and hearing from all the users in the group, from the teachers, from the kids, from the parents, what's working, what's not working, and doing it in a way where we can all help each other, just improve the whole thing. And I think that's where we need to move to. We're all on the same team here. We want, all want these kids to have the best experience they can have. So, and let me go back to that thing about this curriculum. I haven't heard people necessarily saying, oh, you should go back to the old way of doing this, or go back to algebra, geometry. And if the integrated math approach is what the teachers think is best, I think people have comments about pieces of it that they, that could be improved. And I'm not even gonna, you know, in this forum, I don't think I need to list those. I think it's not my job. But people have ideas, and that's the kind of conversation we should be having. And I don't know where the misconception happened, but I am not hearing, get rid of integrated math. And from comments I've heard, I'm sensing that that's part of maybe what some of the teachers think, some of the community folks think. I don't know. So, maybe moving forward, instead of a consultant, a way to move forward would be to think about having some sort of person, and I'll call them a facilitator, and I'm not even sure what that means, but with no conflict of interest in this, right? Just somebody who is thoughtful and wants to help us all have a conversation, our whole community. Have them talk to different groups, bring it to the teachers what they learned, and somehow find some money to help the teachers have time and space. I think there was an eighth-grade math teacher who spoke last time, Ms. Costello, who said, the teachers really want time to be able to work through this. And why don't we think about creative ways to do that? For example, maybe they can all have tests on the same day once a month. I don't know if that works or not. Teachers have to tell us. But, and get some subs in there so the teachers have time to talk. Somehow carved out of their, their school time. But I think what would be a loss in this conversation would be to say, everything's fine, we're doing a really good job, we don't need help. I'd really like us to have a conversation that says, we've made changes, and it's not broken, but there's ways we can make it better. So, that's, that's where I'm at with this.
Anyone else wish to weigh in or give us their thoughts? Mr. Meyer?
So, the, the math wars have been going on, at least since Sputnik. And, and arguments about the best way to teach math, and the arguments between practitioners at various levels, they just never end. And they're pitched. And both sides sincerely believe that they're correct, and both sides can marshal data. I guess, I would agree that my, one of my concerns was that doing a study that is then not used is just throwing money away. Supporting the teachers and administrators in our system, for instance, to allow them release time, that would seem to me a good investment. As a school committee member, it's not my job to determine with this granularity what happens in the classroom. But it is my job to make sure that the concerns of the community are noted and addressed. And so, I guess what I would like to come out of this is that we, we, and this means the you part of we, Dr. Provost, that we commit to closing the loop on this, so that if, if we either find out, is this a, is this a concern that, obviously, it's a concern that enough people have in the community that they have raised it and pushed it. And I was actually one of the members of the school committee who was here when we changed the program. And I remember asking Mark Prince, what's your data for our transition here? What are our, what are our analog districts? Where have we looked to see where another district has made a transition? And I didn't get any response. He said, well, West Hartford is, you know, they've, they've done this. And I said, well, can I see West Hartford's data? I never got a response. So, I guess what I would like to see is that we keep, you know, again, we support teachers, we support administrators, provide them with the resources to do their jobs, because they are professionals. And at the end of the day, we as school committee members and as a community need to trust them. But that part of, you know, part of giving that trust is that we have the evidence to share with the community, so that when they come to us with concerns, that we can address their questions. And so, I would hope that however we address this, that we have the information coming from that effort, so that we can, we can be informed, school committee members, and we can inform our community as well.
Mr. Moore?
Yeah, and I'm just gonna, I'm also harking back to the, when the middle school changed its math curriculum. Because the, you know, at the time, that was a change that was driven by the faculty, and it was a really good thing that they were doing something. Because at the time, the previous math thing here was, was, really had a lot of issues. And I remember we, that we, at least several people were asked, suggested that the way we could sort of tell about its effectiveness, the changes at the middle school, would be reflected in the way, the enrollment patterns at the high school, because that was all that was being changed at the time, was the middle school. And then really before, that could have been a way of measuring what happened in the middle school, the high school changed its method. And so, what had been sort of our proposed or rough measure of, of the impact of the middle school change, that, that disappeared as a, as a way to measure it roughly. And I think, you know, that's, I mean, there's two thoughts here for me. There's one is, I don't think that there's inherently anything particularly disrespectful about having an outside perspective. about having an outside perspective, you know, like when, when our business manager was audited, I don't think that's an attack on her professionalism or abilities. I think it's really valuable to have an outside perspective, because, you know, if you're, have your head down working, you don't always see everything that you need to see. And, and, but at the same time, the way this has sort of worked out, it's ended up looking that way in terms of the teachers. And then the other thing is, we do actually have sort of a, a rough measure of how this is working. So, you know, the MCAS. And it's a very rough measure, obviously, but what we can see, if we were looking, if we were going to look at our math instruction through the lens of the MCAS, we'd say that where we really have problems are in a couple of our elementary schools, you know, maybe three of our elementary schools. And that everywhere else, we're doing okay. And clearly, you know, at the level of, at the, again, at the more, much more detailed level, which we're, we can't really reach, clearly, there's work to be done everywhere. You know, we aren't perfect. But if you were to look at the MCAS and say, well, where is the issues? You wouldn't say it's at the high school, or even in the, you know, seventh and eighth grades. That's not what you would say. So you, you wouldn't, you know, so the impact of this change, you know, the rough measure of it is, well, it didn't destroy math education in the seventh through 12th grades. And you would hope it didn't have any effect on the elementary schools. But that's where we still actually are showing ourselves lagging behind. And so, you know, if I looked at, if, if, if I were to say we wanted to have a, some sort of outside look, I don't think there'd be anything really wrong or disrespectful about having an outside look. But I do wonder about the necessity of that. We already have kind of a rough measure of how things are doing through the MCAS. And, you know, that says, well, then what we should do is look at what we're doing in the elementary schools, really, as opposed to looking anywhere else. And then we could look at the MCAS data too, to say, well, what, you know, any clues about what we should do there? And, and we all saw that, right? We have one elementary school that's doing really well, by all the comparisons that were made, right? So comparisons against its, you know, whatever those, those, you know, sort of peer institutions were, and also relative to the other schools in our district. So you could, might say, well, then we should, since they're all teaching, you know, have the same curriculum, there may be something about the delivery of that curriculum, there may be something about the practice, in other words. And maybe we shouldn't, you know, basically go on a field trip, you know, have, have some people from, from the Ryan Road School visit the other schools, and the people from the other schools visit Ryan Road. And I don't think we, we need to hire a consultant to tell us to do that. Either to tell us, to do the assessment part, because we've had the MCAS, that's an assessment, it says so in the name. And, and we might be able, and that assessment itself kind of tells us, suggests at least a direction for what to do.
I'm just going to see then, Mr. Kaufman?
I don't support a study. I, so spending money, actually, money is a major issue for me, but also I think that we, I agree with what Mr. Meyer said, so I won't repeat that. I think that you said it perfectly. And that the concerns the community has, as well as maybe perhaps we have, or students or community members, I think that's incumbent upon the curriculum director, administrators, and Dr. Provost to make sure we're kept abreast of that, and we check on that, and we look at data, whether it's MCAS, AP, how many students are going to college and taking math. I don't actually know what the data points are. But I disagree. I think teachers are always getting an outside perspective on them, and I think we have to really listen to what they're saying. And what I heard Ms. Aghito and other teachers saying is that they, as Ms. Voss said, they need more time, they need more support, and they need to be able to work together more. And, I mean, they admitted that. And that's where I think it's incumbent upon us to say, that's where I would rather have some money being spent. They see where their needs are, I trust that. And then let's provide that support, and then see what's happening. But, so that's my perspective on that.
Okay. Mr. Kaufman?
Yeah, so as a program evaluator, I think I was naturally intrigued by the idea that as it was first presented to us by Dr. Provost. But likewise, I really wanted to find out more about what was going on in our district's approach to math. Both of my students graduated some years back, so I might have been a little bit more away from the scene, hands-on, than some of your folks. But, so what I did is I spoke to some parents, I spoke to two students, I spoke to two high school teachers, including department chair. I met with high school principal Lombardi. I read materials, and I listened very closely to public comment, which I think has been great the last two, three, four meetings. And I just want to highlight some of the common things that I heard from all sides. Nobody I spoke to wanted to get rid of integrated math, and I think that's really just a great sort of starting point. Everybody I spoke to, everybody, felt and agreed that the delivery of integrated math can be improved, and everyone shared their desire to improve it. And I think some of what was interfering with that was people feeling like the school committee or other powers wanted to get rid of it, wanted to take away their control, disrespect them, what have you. I don't know where that arose, but that was how it was delivered to me, and how, how that materialized. I'm sorry about that. I don't know if I had anything to do with that. If I did, I apologize. I don't think I did. But clearly, everybody I spoke to on all sides, and this was all sides, I would say people on relatively extreme sides, like heavily invested, maybe is a better way, didn't want to, didn't want to do that, but they did want to improve. I, I think, as a matter of interest, a few of the common things that I heard, real practical stuff, people felt like the textbook has gaps, and, and believed it would be beneficial to have time, more time to spend developing lessons to fill those gaps. People felt that supplemental materials to provide additional challenge for students who want this is currently limited, but very much desired by teachers, by students, by parents. Our policy for how students may advance in math through what was identified to me as like a pre-course assessment can be clearer to everybody. There seemed to be some confusion amongst everybody I spoke to. Everybody said it's clear, and gave me a different response. Interesting, easy fix, I think, particularly how, when students move from JFK to the high school. And I'm sure there's many, many other common areas. And the exciting thing for me that, as my colleagues have said today, is that most people are open to improvement if it's done the right way, and it's done in a respectful manner. And I totally support that. So I do feel our teachers, as my colleagues have said, need more resources to improve, and I would certainly advocate for spending some of these funds in that direction. I don't know what it would cost, but I would hope considerably less than $20,000 or whatever. I think it would be advantageous for somebody to look very closely at available data, like our course-taking attendance, course-taking, grades, assessments above and beyond the MCAS. We have PSATs, SATs, maybe college accuplacer exams and others. I think that's a very time-consuming thing, and I think there's a desire from high school teachers for that, but I don't think they have time. And I would think an outside person that maybe they can identify would be beneficial. I think, as my colleague said, definitely some time designated to be able, for the teachers to be able to reflect on their strengths and areas of need. And I think personally, having an outside person that is trustworthy and could be helpful for the math teachers to have some reflective conversations and discussions, and maybe do some classroom observations, if there's a desire for that, would be very helpful. I think having an outside person helps shape the fact and understand the fact that not all the math teachers agree. And it might be difficult for them to talk about different issues that are a priority to them. So having an outside person is, to me, it's just an additional resource. And if they were open to that, and they were, when I spoke to them, at least two of them, I would definitely support that idea. But I think, I can't support the idea of supporting the study, but I can support the idea of rethinking how this would work. Some great ideas have been out there already, properly resourcing it, and certainly taking most of the ideas from the staff that are responsible for delivering it, and coming up with something else would be something I personally could very strongly advocate for.
Other comments? Other debate?
I would just speak from my own experience of my two children. I have a son who's away in college now and began his studies at college as an actuarial science major. I have a daughter that loves math and has taken calculus A, B, C, and is now TA-ing for one of the teachers at the high school. Has had a really great math experience. I know my daughter was more involved with integrated math. I heard the challenges associated with it, just the, the change in the degree of instruction, the more hands-on approach, the kind of investigations and findings. You know, hearing from my daughter at home, I would say that regardless of the way that the, the learning took place, she has very high, high things to say about the instruction that she received, the teachers that she had, the passion in which they presented and were able to explain the material. And I know that she was very successful in the math program at Northampton High School, as my son was. And they had two different experiences, but they, for the majority, had the same instructors. And so professional staff who were responsible for their learning, whether it was in one format or another, were able to deliver the instructions the way, they were both very successful learners in mathematics. And for that, I'm grateful, because it just tells me that regardless of how the instruction was put forward, that at least in my household, the experience of mathematics was very successful, and it well-prepared them for their experience beyond the secondary education experience. So with that said, if there are no further comments by the committee, I would make a motion to postpone indefinitely this topic at this time.
I have another comment.
Okay, okay, sure. Okay.
I guess I just wanted to add to the conversation. I, I agree with, I think a lot of really great points have been made, and I too feel like I can't support the RFP as it is. But I don't want this to just fade away, and I think I've heard that from, you know, some of my colleagues tonight. I think it's a really important topic, in that we do need to take a look. And I think we even heard from, as Ms. Aghito said, that, you know, things can be improved, and this whole idea that we want to make it better, that nobody's trying to get rid of IAM. But we've heard from lots of folks. I've heard from teachers, I've heard, we've heard from a lot of community members, we heard from a lot of students. Not just the petition that was signed, but we know that the student union, when they did their survey, that integrated math was the number-two issue on students' minds, that they were concerned about, and we've never really, you know, tackled that issue. So I think it would be really important to leave it up to the teachers to figure out how, and Dr. Provost and Dr. Chevers, of how we could figure out how we could really tackle this in a meaningful way, and try and figure out what needs to be improved. And I think just, I just want to reinforce that, you know, parents and students need to be a part of this. I think that's really important. We've heard some concerns about kids not feeling challenged, and about how can we sort of make sure that we really are doing our best for every child? And I think we're all on the, as, you know, Dr. Ross said, we're all on the same team, and we want to see this happen. But, but I just would like to make sure that we don't just, I guess, postpone indefinitely. We have some, we've identified some resources that we could use for teachers to be able to have more time together, to work together. We've identified, you know, we've all thrown out some thoughts, and I'm sure that every, the math department and our administrators have, you know, more and better thoughts. But I'd like us to be able to, like, circle back and understand what exactly is what is happening with this, and what are the outcomes of looking at this, and use that money in a way that, that we all feel is a much more effective use of that money. I think it's unfortunate how this played out, and how misunderstood this whole effort became. And I appreciate Dr. Provost making that distinction between voting for or against, is voting for teachers or voting for parents and students, because I don't believe in that division. So, but I do want us, I, I want us to have knowledge, and I want us to be able to share with the public what's happening on this. I don't want it to just get lost, and I don't know the best way to do that, but...
Ms. Voss?
Yeah, I just wanted to reflect on a little bit I've heard. I, thank you. I agree with a lot of what my colleagues are saying. I, I, looking at the data we have available to us, I just want, and a lot of it, we saw two weeks ago in the MCAS presentation. We have a ways to go to offer our students what I think our goal should be in math. I think we should be doing better than we are doing in math, and it is so not a reflection on our teachers. It's much, it's a reflection, as anything, as how much support we can provide, and how much time we can give to figure out how to do this. And we need to do it together. But I disagree respectfully, Mr. Moore, about the MCAS summary you gave. I think three of our elementary schools are all doing about the same, and one of them is lagging behind, and we certainly need to help all four of them improve. I, I don't look at any of those and think we're done with any of them. But if you look at the high school, our high school MCAS scores and our eighth-grade MCAS scores are really not where this community should be. And one of the reasons some of these changes, and as you did say, and I agree with this, it's very complicated, because we made two big changes in math five-ish years ago. One was the le, the de-leveling of math, and one was the curriculum. And some of those goals were to get kids of lower economic groups and kids of color doing better in math, and we have not done that. And so I think that's a really important thing for our community to acknowledge. We haven't done it, let's figure out how together to do better. And we talk about privileged kids, privileged parents wanting certain things. Actually, I'm not worried about those kids. I'm worried about the kids who aren't doing well, and we saw graphs of those two weeks ago. And Dr. Provost has shared this over and over again in these talks. And that is something we have to figure out how to fix, because these, this community can be doing better in terms of sending kids off to colleges to excel. And, I mean, I, I, this is a national problem, this is not a Northampton problem. I teach engineering, I help kids with algebra all the time, I see a range of what kids come in with. And frankly, what I see here, we, I really do think we can do better. And I want to support it. I want to figure, I want us to support it, and the teachers to figure out how.
Mr. Kaufman?
I'll just say it real quickly. My work allows me to go around the state and visit schools and talk to many teachers, so I'll just reiterate what some of my colleagues said, which is, I don't know about it starting in Sputnik. I think I was born then, but I don't remember. But it's been going on for a while, and it's still happening today. Every, almost every school I go in is in this sort of transition of, of moving into more integrated math and the associated changes it means for some teachers that weren't taught that way, or have been doing things otherwise. The curriculums are limited, some are getting better and better, they're better on certain levels than others. And the time it takes to make that transition, and the time it makes to fulfill some of the needs that are local as well as just universal, it takes a lot of time. So I'm happy with having this discussion, and the deep thinking, and the, and the comments from the public. And I too feel like we need to move forward. A, explain what's going on would be great to the community, but also move forward in a proactive way. And that's why, like my colleagues, I would advocate for using some of that money to coming up with an alternative idea. And I don't know if that's a proposal or just an idea, but if we're voting, we can vote, and I think the message is pretty clear about what, what many of us want, but, I don't know if you have any comments on that. On which part? Yeah, maybe we need to vote first, but some of, some of these, some of these comments that reflect your thinking? Or do they differ?
Well, I certainly would agree with your observation that this is the direction that districts are heading in. I do think it is the common core aligned direction. Certainly, like, all transitions are difficult. I would also agree that we struggle with differential success based on student demographics. And focusing on that has been, I think, a core part of my message to the committee for the last five years. And so that still needs to be an important part of the work, I think. When I hear stories about kids who struggle with this, one of the things that I hear are kids who are struggling because they don't have the skills to engage in the kind of math discourse that this type of education requires. And so building up those skills, I think, is a, is a direction. When I think about where to go, I think that's the, that's the direction.
Ms. Voss?
I think it would be an incomplete picture to not also share, there's a lot of people concerned with kids in math classes, just because they're freshmen, this is the math you're supposed to take. And as a result, we have kids in classes where they probably already know the material, and they're feeling quite bored, for lack of a better word. It would be sort of like taking Spanish I when you're pretty fluent in Spanish, for whatever reason. And we heard from some students who came and spoke to us, how kids coming out of private schools can take a test and figure out what, where they're appropriately placed, yet kids within the Northampton public schools are often not given that opportunity. And I've just put this out there so it's not lost from the conversation, because I do feel this is something that's an important part of the do feel this is something that's an important part of the conversation, helping figure out how to navigate our math curriculum. It's not going to work the same way for everyone, but we still want to give everybody the chance to be really strong in math.
Okay. Any other, any other discussion? Vice Chair, it started to make a motion before...
We have a motion, right? We have a motion made and seconded on the table.
There's a motion made and seconded, yes. And then the vice chair was also, was going to make a parliamentary motion, but I don't know if he's going to withdraw that or not.
Well, I just made the motion to postpone indefinitely. You know, that would allow us to move forward. You know, we want to take the vote, but we would move on from this and we could leave it at that.
So the motion to postpone indefinitely essentially kills an item, sort of permanently kills it, it sort of removes it from the agenda of the, of the school committee. So it's just another option for permanently tabling something that the committee does not wish to, to support. So that motion's made. Yes, Ms. Bisansky.
So what's the difference between taking a vote and having it fail and permanently...
There's no, no measurable difference. Yeah. It just speaks to your concern about wanting, not wanting people to view a vote one way or the other as having some, I think that's the, that's the issue. Yeah. That it's not a vote for or against teachers or et cetera, all the other things that you were describing, so. So that would require a second, but if there's no second, we'll go back to the main motion. Okay. So there's no second on that. So then the motion on the table is the motion to vote in favor for or against the, okay? Did you have more debate?
I'd like to try a different emotion, a different new motion, not the one Mr. Zakowski put forward. And I welcome input from my colleagues because I'm not quite sure how to word it, but in the spirit of not moving forward with hiring consultants, as is in the current motion, but in the spirit of offering, not having this disappear either, offering some sort of space for teachers, superintendent, curriculum director to think about this discussion and what their experiences are, what, and how we might have some level of a community conversation and then give them time to, you know, we promote this idea of, they've even said, growth mindset, how can we make it better? And let them come back at some point in an appropriate timeframe. But I don't want to table this and not, and pretend it's not a place where we can make big improvements.
Okay.
I'm not sure how to word it.
Well, we don't have, we have a choice of either, the only choice has been a motion made to approve it and it's been seconded. So all we can really do is vote on that motion. And then any other discussions after that? I mean, we sort of have to dispense with it one way or the other. We keep delaying it, delaying it. The motion to postpone indefinitely is just a way to say it's, you know, it's gone forever. But, I mean, but what's gone forever is spending $20,000 on an RFP is what's gone forever. It's not saying you can never discuss the issue of math again. It's just, that's all. It's just the issue that's at hand.
Okay. I'll try to form an amendment to the motion. Can I do that or can you not amend a motion?
You certainly can. You're the, you're the maker of the motion, but the question is, sure, go, give it a shot and we'll see how it goes.
I guess I'd like to amend the motion to say, could the appropriate group of administrators and teachers come back to us with a request for, if necessary, money to help support them reviewing the math curriculum? I'm not sure that's well worded.
Yeah, the challenge, though, is that this was a transfer of a set amount of funds. So, Ms. Fallon.
I also just feel like we had a really long public conversation about this. We don't need to vote on holding people accountable that this is going to come back to us in some way. I trust that our administrators and our teachers are going to follow through on this and that if they need money, they'll come and ask for it. I think tonight we just need to vote on whether or not we're going to approve that transfer of funds or not. Like, I think that everybody's clear that this is not something that's going to get dropped and forgotten forever.
I'd like to agree with Laura Fallon and also that we're moving into budget season and I'm sure that we'll, I'm sure that John will be taking all of this in and we will see this policy development through our budget, which is what, where we, you know, really see the action steps.
So, your original, you made an original motion that was seconded, you made a revised motion, it doesn't seem like people are seconding it. Can we vote on the first motion?
I'll just say, I'm sorry if I misunderstood. I, Mr. Zakowski's amendment, I was worried with saying...
It wasn't an amendment.
Never talk, or, sorry. I was making sure it wasn't, we would never talk about this again, and maybe I just misunderstood it.
Yeah.
There's a hand over there.
Yeah. It was not, it was not an amendment to your motion. It was just a parliamentary, yeah, something different, but go ahead.
I mean, I, it sounds like we need to take a vote on what's on the table and I understand that, but I do think it would be important to come back in a public forum like this school committee meeting and talk about what we're actually doing with this. I think this was a concern, or is a concern on the minds of many community members and many students, and I don't want it to just get kind of, you know, forgotten or wrapped into, you know, I know we all get busy with what we do and I think it's just important that we have some sort of follow-up and we close the loop on this. That was, you know, a big part of why this was brought forward to begin with that, and so, but it sounds like that's not appropriate in terms of this vote, that we need to take a vote on this. But I'm just wondering where would the appropriate place be to...
Well, I feel like we're, you know, yeah, I mean, I just feel like the genesis, we had a similar conversation like this and lots of other conversations and public comment that led to the superintendent trying to figure out a way to address it, and that's how we sort of got here. And then everyone said, you know, that's a bad thing, superintendent, you shouldn't have done that. And, but now, when the rubber meets the road and we're going to vote on it, then everybody seems to be saying the same, you know, or we're hearing the same thing again, that like, there's a problem with the math and we don't want to drop it and we don't want, so I guess that's the confusing part here. So I feel like we have to bring this to a closure. And then again, if we're, if this vote is saying we trust our teachers and we trust our administrators, then if we really trust them, we're going to vote no and then we're going to move on. I guess that's the way I would frame this.
I'm going to call the question.
Thank you. Okay.
That's, second's non-debatable.
Okay, so there's been a motion made to call the question, which just means that we have to vote on it. So all those in favor of calling the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
You just need two-thirds, right?
I'm going to need to ask for a roll call.
Could you, I'm sorry, can you explain, call the question, what that means?
It's a parliament, well, I'll have the parliamentarian explain it.
Calling the question is, is just, it's to move the...
To close debate.
It's to move the body forward.
Yeah.
So it's a non-debatable motion, requires a second, requires a vote of two-thirds of those voting. And then if it fails, then you return to discussion. If it doesn't fail, then you vote on the main motion.
Thank you.
Call the question, Ms. Molly Burnham?
Aye.
Ms. Rebecca Bisansky?
Nay.
Sarah?
Ms. Laura Fallon?
Aye.
Sam Hennessy?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan Kaufman?
Aye.
Mr. Downey Meyer?
Aye.
Mr. Howard Moore?
Aye.
Susan Voss?
No.
Mr. Ed Zahouski?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor David Narkwitz?
Aye.
Two opposed and the rest for calling the question.
Okay. So we do then, our required debate has ended on this motion and we now need to vote on it. So all those in favor of the transfer of funds would vote aye, all those opposed would vote no. So all those in favor, vote aye. Opposed?
No.
No.
Any abstentions? Okay. So that motion fails, as does the, as does the item on the agenda. So now we'll continue on to the agenda. I think I'm going to sort of, this is a, next is a vote to delegate authority to negotiate an MOU for a 50-cent differential for a pigeon sign language interpreter. And I would ask for the superintendent maybe to just give an explanation of this.
So we have a student currently in the district who has an idiosyncratic form of manual communication. We have an ESP who has been able to figure out the child's language and is really that child's means of accessing the curriculum, both curriculum and peers for communication. I think it is a very specialized skill, it's a skill for one individual in the world. And it's very important that we recognize that with an appropriate kind of compensation. So in discussions with the individual and with NACE, we feel that a 50-cent differential would be appropriate for this one individual, and so I would just ask your authority to negotiate that.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion or questions about that? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So the next item on the agenda is similarly a vote to delegate authority to negotiate a MOU to recognize longevity eligibility for an employee.
And this is a case of an employee who was laid off and then called back during the recall period. There are two provisions of our current Unit A contract that can be interpreted as being a conflict with each other. The recall language says that if an employee is recalled during the recall period, they're restored to all the benefits that they had prior to the layoff. Essentially, you're placing the employee back where he or she was at the time of the layoff. Or the language about longevity says that longevity requires years of consecutive service. So I would like to interpret this, the contract, in the way that is favorable to the employee. This is a break in service that wasn't a voluntary choice of the employee. The district laid the individual off and then recalled him. I don't think, I really don't think it's in the spirit of the contract to say that, okay, you go back to the bottom and have to start counting your years all over again. This is the only individual who is in this situation, so it doesn't create other situations that need to be resolved. It probably would be something to clarify in the future contracts so that we don't have to field MOUs in the future. So it would be precedent-setting in that way, but I think it's fair and so I'd ask your permission to have the authority to do that.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Fallon.
When you said it would be precedent-setting, I mean, does this put us in a different position for bargaining then by agreeing to something like this? Like, are we then tying ourselves to a certain interpretation of that in the contract?
Well, I think it does establish a past practice around this issue, so in that sense it does. I think it is a right-headed past practice.
Any other questions? Okay. Oh, sorry.
I agree and thank you for thinking, I agree 100%. I'm just wondering, what's the, what's the timeframe if someone was, was let go, five years later they were rehired? I mean, how do you differentiate that?
I believe the recall period in Unit A is two years.
Yep.
So it's clearly laid out in the contract, so. And there's a procedure you have to go through for recalls. Basically, it says that you start recalling employees based on seniority and qualification.
So the other aspects are clear, this is, okay, I guess, yeah.
All those in favor of granting that authority to the superintendent, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Next, we have a vote to accept a check of $92.51 for Ohio Pile Prints.
As I said in my communication to the committee prior to the meeting, this came as a surprise for us. We received a royalty check from a contract that we didn't know we had. Ohio Pile had negotiated a licensing agreement with the former athletic director, so that would have been at least five years ago. And we've just received our first loyalty check for all the year that we sold using our logo. So my first recommendation is that we accept the check.
Motion to accept the check in the amount of $92.51.
Second.
Okay. I'll, any questions about this? I bought one of those sweatshirts, actually. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so that is accepted? The follow, the follow-on is of course then to, after we receive this check, to then terminate the contract.
Yeah.
The lucrative contract, we should say.
The reason for this is, obviously, it's not lucrative. We're creating competition for our own ABC and for our own athletic departments. It also solves our year, so it doesn't make any sense in my mind to continue this contract.
So is there a motion to terminate the contract? So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so now we'll move on to the business manager's report and followed by the personnel report.
So in your packet included the appropriations report through November, December 7th. There were few accounts that we want to bring your attention that were deficits, that we are addressing and reviewing with transfers. So first one is the legal services, which is an estimated amount for legal services, including negotiations this year. The academic support and technology integration salaries are included as a transfer that you made earlier this evening. Special education services and tuitions were also transferred earlier this evening. And instructional software and building maintenance custodial supply accounts, we are working with those two department heads, making the transfers that will be coming in between their accounts. And the last one is the non-employee insurance, which is due to higher than anticipated increase in the school board liability because of a couple of claims that we've had. So that information, I don't know if anyone has any questions about the financial report for the appropriation account? If not, we also have the bill warrants that have been signed by a representative are included in the packet for the month of November. And we also have one PTO gift, it says on it, in the amount of $496.20 from the Jackson Street PTO for a bus field trip cost that was made during this month.
Ms. Voss?
I might just not follow everything, but on page two, three, maybe we voted to add this after we approved the budget, but the tech integration specialist midway down that page under 511400, it said original appropriation zero, but then we're spending money. Is that a new position?
That was, that was one of the accounts that we needed to reclass the numbers for the Department of Education, so that was a transfer that was made earlier this evening.
Okay, so this is in a new position?
It's not a new position, it's just taking money from previous account line, that Department of Ed classified the account number differently. So by creating a new account number, we needed to transfer the money from the account it was in to the new account number.
Thank you. And I think I have one more question.
Sure.
I'm just, related to this is the email we got from Ms. Cora talking about the printers not working in the schools, and I'm curious if that has been resolved and if we need to find money to fix it, but it certainly seems to be hard to teach if you can't print your materials.
Hi, May.
Please.
So I meet with the association leadership on a monthly basis. At the time of our last meeting, which was approximately two weeks ago, the, there was agreement that this situation was substantially resolved. I heard anecdotally in a visit to a building about one teacher who is still having a problem, so I'm not going to say 100%, but I'm going to say it's virtually resolved. The issue we had, just to explain, is when we purchased new printers for the district, they required a version of Windows that was not running on our own machines. Some of our machines were so old they couldn't be updated to the right version of Windows. And so then we had to update our computers in order to be able to install the Windows version that was necessary for compatibility with the printers. So it took a while to purchase and deploy all the new computers. There also were a few computers that were able to be made functional with an upgrade, so the computers that were upgraded were upgraded, but that issue has been resolved. I will say, as I meant... I will say, as I mentioned in, you know, in my response, there is an underlying issue with Novell and that's the thing that keeps me from saying that it's a hundred percent resolved. So one of the things that I've learned through this process is that Novell is not a typical enterprise infrastructure for IT hardware. It is the infrastructure that we have. And so technicians were prepared to resolve problems in a non-Novell world and living in the Novell environment, I think, created some issues and some things would crop up that we weren't expecting. So I, and this comes up with many other third-party vendors who are connecting to our system as well. Novell just really isn't the way most of the world is wired. So we're researching a solution to get away from Novell, which I think will be for the long-term, not only this printer configuration, but the back printer configuration and any other hardware we bring into the network because it's very unlikely that the, the hardware is going to come with default settings that are going to be compatible to Novell.
Okay, good night. Sorry.
Sure.
Two, I think these are very quick. In terms of the budget, does this printer problem, who, who does this work? Do we have to pay for somebody to come in and do this? That's question one. And question two is, do the Chromebooks talk to the printers?
So I'm going to defer to Kami on the first question. And may I have to get back to my second question?
So with the copiers that we started with, we signed a new contract with Xerox right before I arrived. So we had the conversion from Rico to Xerox. And when they did that conversion, Rico, Xerox agreed to hire a consultant on their part and they paid for it to actually have Novell troubleshooting as part of the process. Deploying the computers was our technical staff doing it for our IT department. And we've had a number of computers that we've deployed, either that we purchased or that we had donated to us. So we deployed a number of those as well. So we'll be down to possibly needing a few more computers is what we're looking at. But we're waiting for that determination of exactly how many and where are they needed and, or is it just an upgrade that's done? So our IT staff was doing that portion of it.
Other, other questions about the business report? Do you want to review the personnel report and pass it out?
So the personnel report for November and December, we've had for new hires, we've hired two ESPs in that period of time, one custodian, one nursing care coordinator and one IT pathways coordinator. For the separations, we've had three ESPs, three custodians, one administrator who's retired and one early learning specialist separate. And that's been it for November and December.
Okay. Any questions about the personnel report? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to the superintendent's report and is there a handout?
There is a handout.
Okay.
I was at a, of a legislative meeting that was referenced earlier in public comment. One of my peers had a handout, so I figured I should have a handout. So if you can start on this side, I'll be referring to it.
No, we have printers, they work.
So I want to make you aware of something that's exciting and also very sad. We learned this week that we crossed another tipping point in the story of our changing student population. For the first time during my tenure, we qualify for a school summer feeding program. So I say I don't like the term feeding program and eating station. Those are USDA terms for the, for the remainder of my talk, I'll just talk about programs. So the exciting part about it is that we know many of our families struggle to feed their children when school's not in session. And this qualification will enable us to do something about that soon. The sad part is that in order to qualify, at least 50% of the students in the school must be eligible for free and reduced lunch. And we've just crossed that threshold at Ryan Road and will probably do so very shortly at Bridge Street School as well. So directing your hand up, your attention to the handout in front of you, the pink areas on this map designate the parts of North Hampton and surrounding communities where populations, more than 50% of students are eligible for free and reduced lunch. So the pink area just south of the Sawmill Range, I knew that North Hampton had a mountain range. Look at it, this is almost an exact overlay of the Ryan Road attendance area. And then if you look at the area along the Connecticut River, that is almost an exact overlay of the Bridge Street attendance zone. So in Ryan Road currently, we have more than 50% of our students eligible for free and reduced lunch. In Bridge Street, I think it's inevitable that we'll have more than 50% eligible for free and reduced lunch when you just look at that, that shading. There are some students from other areas that are holding just above that threshold, but I think it's without a doubt going to cross over sometime in the next year. So if you turn the page over, you can see all the program sites in Massachusetts. You'll notice that we already have one program in North Hampton. That's actually a satellite location of an Amherst program. Because we formerly did not have any schools that qualified, we couldn't operate a program in North Hampton, but food from a designated school can be delivered to any pink zone anywhere in the state. So food prepared in Amherst had been brought to this program in North Hampton. We now will have our own school and probably have two schools that are qualified to their own program. So very likely that a number of dots in North Hampton will proliferate over the next two years. For now, we think it's too late to get a USDA summer program up and running this year. There's a lot of work and preparation that needs to be done in order to actually receive final approval to open a summer program. But we hope to be able to offer a pilot program through the Wayne Street grant. This is a grant we've applied for in the past and been awarded in the past. We've used it to address issues of students coming to school hungry, but not participating in the breakfast program. So we think there's a good chance that we could be successful again. This year we'll be submitting the application in conjunction with the Park and Rec Department. And our goal would be to offer lunches to students participating in the Park and Rec Summer Program. It's already crossed the street. We could prepare lunches here. We estimate the cost is about $2,000 a week. So if we're successful, depending on the size of the grant awarded will determine the extent of the pilot we're able to run this year. But it will be good experience for us. As I said, I, I think we should be planning a USDA program for the summer of 2020. And so we may be going from one program in 2018 to two in 2019, including the pilot that I just talked about, and possibly three or four in 2020. So as I said, it's both exciting and sad. So while you're looking at this, I also just have to say, it feels like there are too many dots on the map.
Yeah.
All of our population centers in major roadways are mapped out with dots. You can see I-91 filling in with eligible areas nearly all the way from Connecticut to Vermont. You have dots going all along Route 2 and Route 90. And the entire Cape is looking like it's eligible. And all this is happening at a time of a historic economic expansion. So I just wonder what this map will look like at the height of the next recession. So I'd like to end with some kind of uplift, but I really can't with this. So I just want to thank you for listening and for helping to do my job to care for the rising generation, which obviously is having some very hard times in spite of everything you hear about the economy doing well. We have kids who are really suffering, not just in North Hampton, but across the state. And, you know, I really appreciate your shared advocacy on behalf of young people, not only here, but across the state, and just really appreciate your partnership.
Thank you, Dr. Margulies. So that is the superintendent's report. We have no more business this evening. We have future business and meeting dates, the school committee meeting of January 10th, 2018, here in the JFK Community Room. Next on the agenda, we do have a request for executive session. And I would ask the vice chair if he would make that motion. Sure.
So I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session, a request for executive session in the JFK Library under Massachusetts General Law, open chapter 18, section 21, on a free to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. So as long as session, we have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. This requires a roll call vote. I ask the clerk to call the roll.
Rebecca Bucansky?
Yes.
Ms. Laura Fallon?
Yes.
Sam Hemmsey?
Yes.
Mr. Lon Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Downey Meyer?
Yes.
Susan Voss?
Yes.
Ed Zahouski?
Yes.
Mayor David Narkwitz?
Yes.
Ms. Molly Burnham?
Yes.
Okay, I need to inform the public that the school committee will now be moving into executive session just to hold these discussions. An open session would have a detrimental effect on our negotiating position. I also need to advise the public that we will adjourn directly from executive session and will not return to open session. That will now move to executive session.